All right, so I'd like to call to order this Board of Ed special meeting on July 28th, and invite you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, I'm up. So I gotta remember I had this lapel mic on. I have sort of my loud booming teacher voice, and when I get really excited and animated, my voice gets louder and louder, so I will do my best not to deafen you during this segment here. So we're gonna talk about goal setting, and as I said, we decided to come into an open session to have this conversation so we can talk more candidly about the district at large and to kind of engage in some activities around, you know, your district. And where I always like to start this conversation off around goal setting is the notion that this still doesn't work. Oh, there you go. The notion that successful leaders live life backwards. So what do you guys think that means? They live life backwards. In other words, then what's the starting point? What do you think?
End in mind.
Ah, the end, right? The end result. What is it that we're trying to accomplish? And that's a vision, all right? A vision is what do we aspire to become? A vision is different from a mission. A mission is why do we exist? Vision, on the other hand, is what do we aspire to become within the system? Now, I wish this worked better because it's messing up my flow. Now, you guys went through a process in which you developed a vision. Your vision is unique, and to be honest with you, I've never seen a vision like yours per se, and that is not a criticism by any stretch of the imagination. Typically, when I see a vision, it's a very short truncated statement of, you know, what it is that if they fulfilled all their hopes and dreams, what would it become? I like your vision because it's broken down under the notion of the whole child, and it's put into three different buckets. 21st century knowledge and skills, global citizenship, social and emotional well, physical well-being. And when you look at a vision, having a vision is all great, but according to the old futurists that a vision without action is a dream. Action without vision is a nightmare. Vision with action has the potential to change the world. And so you've already taken steps already in which you've gone out with a community survey, and you've developed a process in which you've developed sort of these vision, and then aligned to those vision, it articulates in terms of how you're going to quote unquote achieve that. And what I'm gonna have do in just a second here is I'm gonna have Dr. Blanch come up and talk about, well, what was the process that was undertaken in order to develop this success plan that you currently have? From there, I'm gonna break you guys down into the small groups that you were in, and there's two main questions that I'm gonna have you guys discuss within your small groups. What do we like about the development process that was undertaken? And then on the flip side of that, what was missing from that process, or what would you like to see included in that process? Because that's gonna help us in our conversation as we move forward. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Blanch.
Thanks, Jamie. I'm okay, I got this one on. Yeah, thank you, sir. All right, so I'll go ahead, we'll probably about 10 or 15 minutes just walk this piece through. So as Jamie was saying, we're reconnecting. So roughly 12 years ago, when I landed here, we had multiple, multiple conversations across the community, faculty, staff, board membership at that time dissipated, everybody that we could get. So it took a good six to nine months to bring all the information and develop what Jamie was speaking about earlier, we'll look at a little bit more here. Last summer, we kind of went back, in particular after, hopefully as we're walking out of COVID, reconnecting to those mission and vision ideals that we've established for our district. So last summer, in this very room, our collective board, our entire administration council team spent a good portion of that retreat actually going back and looking at the mission and those vision and the goals, and we started talking a little bit more specifically about the learner profile for a student when they're in the school, and what that means to be a graduate, a Tusker graduate from the school. And so we spent more time looking at that. So that's an added value we put in there. After we met, we had Tusker University conversation with, opened that up to community, that was a piece that we had done last fall. We also went out to the billings, similar conversation, some of the pieces so folks can reconnect to this work, recommit. And then also, we kind of closed the end of the year where met with our students at the high school with their Senet group, about 50 or so kids over there, kind of went through same process and brought that forth and kind of recommitted to this work. And so when we think about that, again, one of the pieces that really hasn't changed is this idea about our mission. And so when we think about where we are, oops, sorry. See what you mean, I think. So the why we exist is what Jamie was saying before, this idea about why do we exist? Well, we're gonna ignite the passion each student by engaging students at a personal level to ensure success in that global society. So this is the conversation, this is the work that came over hundreds of conversations and ultimately landed us in here. So short, but tight. What will we do? We are gonna ignite the passion for whom? In each student. By doing what? What are we gonna do? We're gonna engage kids. We're gonna engage students. And how are we gonna do that? We're gonna do it at a personal level. To what end? To help them ensure success in the global society. So it's short, it's tight. Again, I've seen many of them. I prefer the brevity here, very crisp and very clear of what we're looking at doing in here. So then, as much as we talk about why do we exist and say, how do we want to exist? How do we want this to translate into kind of action pieces in our, in our school district? And so before we get into that, what I was hoping we can do, and I think you saw it's kind of one of the questions Jamie's got coming up, what is your current understanding of the goal-setting process? And that's where we're gonna start. So you should have an administrator at each one of the tables there, and it's gonna be really short, I'm just asking them to take some notes, but basically, what's your current understanding of what the goal-setting process is? Then we'll walk through the process, and then at the end, I'm gonna ask them the reflectment. So now, what's your current understanding? So this is where I'm at, and here's my new understanding. Any questions? Just, again, just a couple minutes there. What's your current understanding of that? So I'll turn it back to the table talk.
All right, this one is for you two.
Current understanding of the goal-setting process.
How the process of setting those goals and the reaction and the success plans and the related evidence out of that. So how does that process take place? Is it just raised in an office and doing this, or what's the process involved for that?
So it's more than process, it's also what our role is as different stakeholders in this district.
And you could certainly put that right there. What do you see your roles is, and what's like your current understanding of how those goals are set? Yeah? Yeah. All right, we'll go ahead and pull back together again. Hopefully you had enough to at least get a few thoughts down on the paper just about your current understanding of the goal development and structure of the district, so we'll kind of come back to that, just enough of a start.
Do we answer the question?
Yeah, and there is no wrong, it's just you gotta get the relationship going, you may hear that a few times today, so. So, yes, that's what you will, you will definitely hear that for sure. So here's those three elements, the buckets. So that short, you know, kind of vision statement that Jamie mentioned before about how do we want to be? We desire to be a school district where our child's learning experiences, they are grounded in the development of the whole child. That's, that's how we want to exist, in a place where we're constantly looking and behaving and operating by thinking about the whole student. You can't have one without all the elements. And what are those elements? From our work with our vision and mission setting, we've defined that. We've defined that into those three large buckets. 21st century knowledge, global, and social, emotional, and physical wellness. And then we actually took that to the next layer, and we spent some time and really zoomed in on that and identified, well, what does that mean? And so specifically, those are the 21st century knowledge things that we need, and some of those skills and creativity, the compassion, the caring. So we spent time in that language and all that work kind of came out of all those multiple engagement sessions. Then we drilled it down to what do we mean by social, emotional, and physical wellness? Well, this is what we mean. Self-awareness and self-management, relationship skills, social awareness, that's the specificity that we've, we've really talked about. This is what we mean, 'cause that, we talked a little bit before about clarity is kindness, and we're trying to be as clear as we can with our communication pieces in here. And so with this next piece, third bucket there is global citizen. Well, what does that mean to be a global citizenship in Somers School District? Collaborating with others in diverse backgrounds, developing self-awareness, empathy, and appreciation, giving back to the local and global community. So those are the specific elements that we say, okay, this is what we're talking about when we say global citizen. And so with that piece set, where again, you think about now how and what are we committed to as a professional and learning community, our team, our faculty came together and identified, these are the things that we believe and how we'll operate. What does it look like? We're gonna support that personalized learning in the middle there. So you think about personalized learning, well, what does it mean to be a personalized learning? Example, students learners set goals. Adults with a school model benefit from strong professional and student relationships. Students will be, as they pursue increasingly independent pathways, we want to engage parents and teachers to become guides and mentors. Think about our mentoring program and things. All of that is generated and driven by the work that we've identified here in our expansive description of our vision. This piece now, we spent, this is kind of our recommitment and our reconnection to the mission and vision is, well, what's the profile of a student that we would say would be in Somers looking for? These elements, that's actually some of the board narrative that we spent last year on our retreat. And then as we look at, here are those elements of the learner profile that we have really come to basically adopt in the district. As we look at the DB program at the high school, now many years program here, and ninth and 10th grade, those elements of that learner profile, and we spent time talking and identifying, well, what does that mean, and what's the information we'll see around those areas? Next piece here is just thinking about as a professional collaborative team, that circle around there, that's intended to give it strength, our diagram and our purpose, strength and rigidity. These are the driving questions that drive our work throughout any layer of the organization. Basically from Rick DeForre's work on professional learning communities, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? That's a clarity of conversation, down to the grade level, down to the course level, thinking about state standards and thinking about what it looks like in our curriculum, mapping this off, so that clearly defines what we're looking for. How do we know students know and able to understand? That's our assessment system. So our formative assessment, our comprehensive assessment, our internal, our external assessment, it's that balanced assessment system that gives us the understanding about how do we know? And what do we do when students don't know or aren't able to do something? How do we intervene and support additional supports? And then what do we do if students already are doing well and need to move forward? You can think about, Stacy, you may remember, is it seven years now, six years? We brought on our advanced learning program. And so that is in direct response to that of children who are really doing well, really screwed up, we put in advanced learning program with dedicated faculty and staff to support those kids who are moving in that direction. So where does all of this come from? I'm just gonna go back to the beginning. These are our district slash community slash board slash Somers goals. You notice they're in our three buckets. We will ensure the intellectual growth and development in all learners. That's the drive that comes through. That's the directing our excellence is what, our tagline is forward in excellence. That came again out of vision process, so when you think about that first one, this is the work that drives everything, these three goals. The next one, we will nurture social, emotional, and physical wellness in all learners. That is the goal that is set and established at the district, or at the board level, community level. And the last one is we will foster growth as global citizens in all learners. That you will see cascading itself through the entirety of the organization, across the board. And so when you look at this and we think, okay, so now if this is giving guidance and direction, this is the destination we determine, this is the ideas that we're looking at, this is our goal to be in these three areas, that's established at the board level. Then as we think about, okay, so now, how do we drive that excellence? So the driving, the engine behind here now are these mechanisms now you see added to that graph. So again, basically, when you look at where we were before, there's the elements, and then now as we think about how do we go ahead and drive that forward, you can see that now what's coming forward are the operational sides. Administrators, teacher leaders, teachers, community, those are the folks that are involved in driving this. How does that happen? You see the district success plan and the bottom success plan from each school. And then you have those team Smaracles. So when you think about this, I'll describe it as really procedural operational goals that you're looking at, that we're looking at going ahead and implementing. Hey, guys? Oh, thanks. Sorry. Yeah. Talk to my children, have you? And so when you think about really two goals. So one, we're looking at a goal area that, that the board has set those guiding goals, and then in the, in one area procedural goals, process goals, we're looking at. And then as we look at results-driven goals. So we have, we have two of those areas. So in essence, in these first set of goals, the district success plan, you'll see now they're guiding the schools, these success plans, and their SMART goal development. So those are, they're both there, they're both necessary, yet they are different. And so you will see some specific goal areas that would be driven by the success plan out in the schools. So if you look at something like here, and so from a process perspective, we're looking at increasing our capacity, a capacity piece. How can we get better at this work? And this work is about really effective tier-one implementation of classroom. Great, so that's a piece we're talking about from procedural piece to having that conversation and driving that forward. Then the building, there's obviously other ones in here, but time, then the building will pick that up, and then they will take that, and then now make that a building-specific procedural piece. So now what they're gonna be looking at doing, they're looking at their best practices, specific to ELA and mathematics, so they're notching that down to the next level. Then, as we'll see here, they've identified, now what's the body of evidence? What's the information we had to see? Because the end result is we want all the systems to work and be better with the ultimate intent of improvement student learning. So that's where this group, again, these are developed at the school site, these are developed in a relationship with all the teacher leaders and the administrators at each site. So depending upon the site, you could have a dozen or more individuals involved in identifying, establishing a success plan. So teacher voice is in here throughout the entire process. This actually is revisited multiple times throughout the year, so at the, May roughly is when this team, these are last year's, 21, 22, they looked at results, they identified where they're at, they identified their successes, opportunities, and next steps, aspirations they have for the following year, the results they're looking for. So that's a piece that the team did in May. They'll come back in this very room here in just a few weeks as the, what are we up to, about 90 individuals or something like that, Kevin? Faculty members are coming, spend time, recommitting, re-familiarizing themselves with this work, and then they continue back into the schools. Chad, you got something there?
Well, I partly answered what I was just going to ask, was the timeframe of, like in the, in the building levels, when are they working on the school?
Sorry about that. I think you had partially answered it right before I asked it, but it was about the timeframe of when these are worked on from the different components in the district, whether it's the administration, at the building level, and I mean, I'm presuming it's not all year round, that there's maybe a, a chunk out of the year where this is a bigger focus for the building before it comes up.
Yeah, so depending upon who's there, the reflective piece, again, there was a made with that teacher leadership team of the administration. Then there's checkpoints throughout the years, they're looking at how are we making progress towards our process goals. Then the key part that comes in here next is driving that to that next level. So these are driven down to the team level. This is an example of a third-grade team SMART goal for last year. You see across the top, location, the team that was on there, the committee, the teacher leader that was involved, the team leaders, and you will also notice the driving piece from the very beginning we talked about is the overarching district goal of ensuring that students find successes in 21st century knowledge skills. Intellectual growth and development of all learners. That's the driving district goal here. Not that the others aren't connected, but that's a driving district goal. Then the school goal, they're then knocking it down, saying, look, we're looking at increased percentage of students performing at or above proficiency, and this example is reading on the STAR assessment. So looking at that. Then what you can see, then the team here, they went over and they drilled that down to the next, kind of closest area in here, and some of this goal development. Here's our current reality. Here's where we sit today, in third grade. 69% of our students in third grade started the school year at or above proficiency. Their goal is to get that number to 80%. So there's your intent, there's your current reality, your desired state, and then more, there's the specific strategies, action steps, not from board, not from me, not from the administration of the building, I mean, it's the collective energy of this third-grade team saying, this is where we are, this is what we know, this is what our, the kids sitting in front of us today need, and this is what we're gonna do to help get after them. So things like Fanta's and Penel, reading resources, tier-one support. So drive that back to a fiduciary responsibility from the board, you'll look at, oh, well, are we supporting that from a board perspective and a fiduciary? Yes, those are new learning resources and things like that. So you can see how those come along on the way. And then ultimately, then as they reflect at the end of the year, then it's like, okay, so what are the results? So the close of the school year, 85% of the kids, third-grade students were at or above proficiency. In addition, the students that receive AIS services, academic intervention support, moved from 37% proficiency in the fall to 77% proficiency on the STAR reading. So that's the specific measurable impact, not at this level, it's at that level with those third-degree kids in those eight sections. And that's the piece. And then they reflect, so what next? So we talked about continuous promote before, so where do we go next? So then they start their process again. So they're looking at the third-grade students, the success, the third grade was the strongest grade level over there this year in that success piece. So they looked at that and had the conversation that specifically, those teachers are gonna get a refresh around our foundations program, which is early reader access for our program, started at Promos. And then also, that the idea about science of reading, best practice literacy, that's gonna go ahead and connect across all grade levels. So it didn't, the, the practice and best thoughts didn't just stay in third grade, 'cause it's a connected three through five leadership team, they brought their information back, they said, hey, what are you doing, what's going on? And so now their determination for process next year is to go ahead and make sure the Fonte, many lessons curriculum will continue to provide guided reading, results-based, they'll be working on their new updated results goal with the children that were in front of them that year. So if you think about, again, where we're starting and where we're going, that's how excellence in action gets moving forward. So I'll give you two minutes to go back, so you had what your understanding was then, what is it now? So I'll give you two minutes, just turn it back and continue that conversation. So what is your understanding of goal-setting in the district now? All right, we're gonna go ahead and see if we can pull back together here, we'll... So the rest of our time here now is to kind of go through some examples and things like that. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna kind of hand it off to Jamie, 'cause the, kind of the next question I think goes from there, and then I'll just kind of hang off on the side, just like clarifying questions for me for a second.
Absolutely, and you know, I appreciate, you know, Dr. Blanch going through the process, and one of the things I want to point out front here is there's no one tried and true methodology to create district goals. There's different avenues in which you can take. My, you know, me coming in today is to discuss about best practices and processes that may fit for you, but ultimately it's incumbent on you to determine what's gonna work best for the district. As you know, Dr. Blanch has pointed out, a lot of work had been put into the development of this success plan, and there's sort of been a process, but we want to talk about future processes. And so what I'd like to hear from you right now, before we go into the next two questions, is a little bit about the success plan and the development in terms of what is your understanding, that last question that Dr. Blanch had given you about the process, and if you could just kind of, whomever took notes, just kind of report out about the general conversation that took place at your table. So, you know, if you guys wouldn't mind, we'll start at this table, just kind of go around in terms of, you know, what was the discussion around your understanding of how the plan is developed?
Yeah, and I guess we first, we could talk more about, we had talked more about our understanding of how the goals were developed, which, from that perspective, we had kind of talked about how they seem to be developed kind of collaboratively with the administration and the leaders, administrative leaders and team leaders and teacher instructional staff within each school building at that point. And then in terms of the goal development, the boards involvement, it tends to be that the goals are presented to the board. The board hasn't been part of that development process. And that, and the success plan, kind of similarly with a lot of input from community and teachers and instructional staff within the school. Did you want to add anything, Eva?
Yeah, I think the, the board is one element, should be involved in the goal-setting, that's no question. The question, of course, is what level, what detail, what, you know, specifics to get involved? And the board is representing the community in a way supposedly, okay, definitely more impartial in the sense that it is representing the community. So in that aspect, the board should be involved at the level, any issues that the community is concerned, okay? Which is the school and the faculty and the so on, may or may not aware of, or may, may not take the same opinion or same position and so on. That board serves a role to be, call it arbitrator, call it understanding, call it, you know, resolver of issues, so on. So that process of goal-setting should get more involved. And when we have a excellent, you know, notion, philosophy driving our school, the next level, as we had talked about in previous sessions, how do we set those goals, really bring things year after year with clear achievement, clear objective, you know, that is obtained? And that part, again, the board should get involved so we can, you know, relate that. This conceptual whole child process is excellent, but we have to look at, what did we do last year, a year before, so on? I do know that a school has your internal process of a, of a sort of comparison, but that may not be transparent to the board and the community in a more, call it data-driven, call it more, you know, openly discussed fashion, towards positive objectives, okay? I think that's very important, because I think this community, when, whenever they have misunderstanding or have different opinion, usually is because they did not see that, you know, data transparency, you know, it presented to everybody, so we formed, you know, consensus. That's why we have, you know, opinions coming in. It's just example, we were talking about, let's say, teaching math, what kind of math, what kind of process, you know, how we do it, why we have different opinion. We should resolve that, and board has a role in that process, okay?
Okay, excellent. And if I understood you correctly, a lot of the conversation you had was just how the goals are sort of developed into the objectives and created an actionable plan internally. And what I understand, that process involves a lot of teacher collaboration in order to create those, and to create the measurables to determine, are we moving in the right direction? And obviously, then at the end of the year, you're assessing that. But if I understood you correctly, we kind of delved into these two questions, which is great, 'cause I think instead of doing a small group, we can do this as a whole group. If I understood you correctly, one of the things that was missing from the process was the board's involvement, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the goals that were developed were presented to the board as opposed to the board having an active role in the process. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So the other thing that I heard you say was kind of that transparency piece as representatives of the community, how do we create that transparency when it comes to the plan at large? And we can talk a little bit about how you can actualize that within the normal operations of the school board, and how that information should be funneled upwards to you periodically at board meetings. So you are creating not only the ability to monitor those goals throughout the year, just not at the end of the year, but throughout the duration of the year and creating that transparency, and I will address that. So thank you. Let's go to the next group. So sort of your understanding, and if you'd like to talk a little bit about what you liked about the process and what you feel was missing, anything that we haven't, you know, articulated as well?
Sure, so we did talk timeline, right? As Claire gave us a good, Claire, if you'll fit up in if I butcher the timeline. But we were trying to figure out the overall, you know, process and to where we actually see it, right? And the cabinet, you know, Ray and his team do, you know, work on this plan here, then take that, and this gets worked on April? Or late summer, early summer? Sorry. April, June. And then it gets passed to the buildings, you know, the buildings heads or leads, right? Principals, you know, early summer, they'll take a look at that and then start passing that, you know, have some, I guess, time to comment back on this, and then start passing that down to their, you know, their staff within the schools. Come up with a goal, and then we see the grade level goal stuff like this. Now, and Ray, Nancy, just, you correct me if I'm wrong, right? But my, I'm trying to go off of memory from last year, the, down to the details of the specific grade or school level, I feel like we didn't get to see that, that got bubbled up to us maybe in the fall? Am I accurate?
It's in October, correct? The whole child.
It's in October, right? So this is happening in, you know, starting in April, June, you know, June through the summer, hopefully it gets finalized before the school, you know, starts. But again, come October, we're finally seeing the output of that.
Well, if you, if you remember in the last dashboard in June, all that information was put up there as well, too, that you would see in the October report for the third through eighth grade, it was, it was in there and stuff like that, yeah.
It was presented there, not in the board meeting, though, in our...
It was in that dashboard, 'cause it's kind of after schools closed, when we get those results, pretty much.
Got it. Oh, for the, for the numbers for last year?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, yeah. But not the goals for the, each, whether the grade or the schools, not this for the school success.
Yeah, that success plan is when the principals come to that fall meeting.
The fall meeting is first, yes. So that was just kind of, it's, it feels kind of what's missing in the process there. It just feels like we're getting that late in the game, and it's already established in the, you know, in the year.
Sure.
Again, as a representative of the, the school district, right, and getting asked questions, you know, and I'm going to go from now until the fall, right? So my personal, you know, perception on it is, I don't know. I'm not sure exactly what the individual school goals are until the fall piece of it, right? So, again, being, I don't want to be part of the process as far as the teachers go in that level. I don't want to pick any of that stuff there. But, you know, just being more involved in understanding what's coming up and, you know, what's being done before we go into, kids coming into the classroom and knowing that there's something there, I think is kind of something I would like to see, or that's missing for me. Did you have anything to add?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, you do without the mic.
Yeah, all of that, definitely. I mean, that's what a lot, a lot of our discussion was here.
I, I think as, as a board, as, as a team here, board working with the administration, what we're, what I, what I hear from a lot of us, and what I think myself, too, when we go through this, is we're, we're just really striving for some more clarity on the granularity of the board's input in the goals, you know, because we don't want to be involved in the third grade team setting, you know, how they're going to achieve their improvements. So where is that, where is that level, that sweet spot?
Yep.
Where we have the greatest impact and, and is reachable for us also, that, you know, sometimes we can have, I feel like, you know, maybe I want to be more involved, but that might be overreaching what I can actually accomplish. So I'm trying to, as a board member, and I think all of us as a team, that that's something we're really trying to figure out.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's one of the things we're going to delve into, you know, what is the responsibility of the board? How does the board have input? But more importantly, how do they work in tandem with the internal staff and not fall into that, you know, that pitfall of micromanagement and getting into the weeds? Obviously, you want to stay within your domain. So we can kind of go down that avenue. I'm glad you brought up timeline, because there are different timelines you may want to consider. But I think what I hear from you in terms of not only the transparency component, but also the timeline piece, is really having it mapped out throughout the year. So now, when people do approach you, where are you in this process? When are the goals being developed? You can be, be able to articulate that better. So I think, you know, part of the planning process is to carve out that timeline. So now it becomes very apparent. And there are different options in terms of when you can develop the goals. And to kind of jump the gun here a little bit, there are districts who will revisit their broad visionary district goals. They generally do that in about October. Now, the planning is not for that academic year, but what they're doing is they're starting to plan for the following academic year. The benefit behind that is it creates a much longer runway for now, those building teams to work to create those objectives and to create the action plan. So by the time you're entering into the school year in September, all those plans are already created. And what you're going to do is, a lot of boards come together in about August, and they kind of just go through the plan. All right, here's our goals, here's the action plan, here's how we're going to monitor those as we go throughout the year. And that becomes a little bit more of a fluid process. But again, there's no one size fits all. It really depends upon what you're doing and what you want to accomplish. The other piece, too, that I'll kind of get into here is that when you create those broad goals, like you see in that success plan, those tend to have a shelf life, meaning they're generally not going to change anywhere from about three to five years. Doesn't mean you can't revisit them and make updates as necessary, but what you have is more in line with what a strategic plan looks like. Within a strategic plan, it's the objectives. They're going to change on an annual basis. And part of the board's responsibility is being privy to, how are we working towards those objectives? Have we hit our benchmarks? Were there anything that came out of left field like COVID that hit us that we weren't anticipating that has derailed our efforts? And that becomes part of the monitoring process. And we'll dive a little bit further into that. So I'd like to hear from the last group if they have more to add, and then from their perspective.
So the first question was how the success plan was developed. And we talked a bit about how we'd like to see it developed. And we agreed with other groups that it felt oftentimes that the overarching goals for the district were sort of presented to the board and not a part of the process that we did together. Now, I just have to acknowledge that last year, we did spend quite a bit of time building our goals together.
Yeah.
I think we spent also a lot of time talking about what we liked about the development, but also what was missing, we thought, and what we would like included, if it's okay.
Absolutely.
So check me if I have this right. I took notes. You're shocked. So, and Nick, you had said about the success planning in the fall meeting being sort of like a little bit too late, even though it's previewing for next year. But I also think it's important to sort of revisit. So if we were talking about what we thought would be missing from the process is, again, having that understanding upfront. And something else that we, that we talked about is the clarity of the goals. And we were, we took a peek, maybe we stepped ahead, but we looked at the sample district goals that you shared. And it feels like our goals are more mission vision-y and less goal-y. And so we were wondering, you know, if there was a possibility to be a little bit more specific, not so specific that, to your point, it doesn't address all of the schools, but that there's a little bit more heft to them. And that, and that, again, we could be part of that process as the board in designing, developing, and then obviously walking away when the objectives are created to let the district and the schools do what they do best. But we talked about, you know, transparency, yes, because transparency builds trust. That calibration with the board also increases our understanding and allows us to then communicate with the community, which we, you had spoken about, Amanda, of like, how do we communicate this back to the community? And we need to understand to be able to communicate it. And that we want to make sure that we're engaging in our shared governance and oversight, but not micromanaging. So that was like, and I like how you said Chad about reach. I didn't hear, I've never heard that before. I like that term, because it's nicer, I think, than micromanaging. But you're right, like, what's reachable to us. So I'd like to think about that, please, and thank you. I'm going to stop talking.
And so that's really excellent input. And I think we got a lot about, you know, what was sort of missing from that process, and I can give you some guidance. I'm sorry, did you, did you have something to add?
No, I think everyone, like, covered everything. I don't want, you know, I'm last, so it's...
No, 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 I didn't. I, I kind of jumped the gun. I didn't realize it. By all means, please, share your thoughts.
No, I mean, I think we, we were talking about how, I mean, it kind of reiterates, you know, if it's like a 10-step process, we kind of end up at like eight or nine, and then it's, it's already set in stone before. So I agree with everyone on that. I think that's important. And, you know, just getting, when things are presented, if it's already kind of a done deal, then you don't really feel like you have a, a role in the process. Or, I hate the word stakeholders, but you don't feel like you're a part of the process.
Sure, absolutely. And so, you know, really quickly, just kind of throwing it out there, and I think I already heard a lot of it, but I just want to give you an opportunity to vocalize this one more time. So what, you know, what was in the process that you really liked? What do you feel was extreme value within that process that, you know, needs to be retained moving forward? What are your thoughts? And what did you like about the process?
I think the involvement in, across the whole district, all the professionals. I mean, there's a lot of input, a lot of just personal investment, I think, from experiences in that. And I think that's fantastic.
Absolutely. And I commend you for that.
Relationship people.
Relationship people, again. You're inflating some egos here.
It's important.
Just teasing. But I think, you know, I commend you, because, you know, goals should not be created in a vacuum. Obviously, you want to solicit input. And based upon my understanding of how the plan was developed, there was a lot of outreach, not only internally to the staff, but reaching out to your community in order to get that input. And that I think that based upon the conversation here, that is something that you would like to retain. But in that process, better understanding of how do we, as the board, fit within that process? And how do we better have sort of involvement in creating that transparency within that process at large? Go right ahead.
Yeah, I, I think I would say just to that also, I, I think when you have that kind of outreach and involvement, it makes it hard for us to articulate where we are. I mean, it'd be a lot easier if we said, oh, well, we set these goals, and then Dr. Blanch takes them, and he just passes them on. But because there's so much involvement, it is a tough thing to articulate. And so I think, as we clarify timelines and everything else we're talking about, I think that's really going to help.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, community involvement, not only external and internal, meaning your staff, you know, there's different avenues you can take. Tried and true strategic planning methods, you would have a series of workshops in which you would bring your stakeholders in that represent, you know, the various groups within your community. The problem with that is that you got to weigh out, and I shouldn't say it's a problem per se, but, you know, here is something you should be aware of, is that it's very time consuming. And that creates, you know, a longer runway. You know, we have the ability today to do electronic surveying. A lot of people are very used and accustomed to that. And so, you know, when going out with a survey, maybe you consider that. You know, as I said, you know, you need to plan in order to plan. My job is to give you guys food for thought today about how do we create that plan and best move forward. So now, everybody's on the same page. We like the process. And the thing about process wise is that it's not set in stone. Obviously, you can revisit it year after year, and you have this conversation. What worked really well for us within this plan and development? What did we find was some sort of, you know, struggles or hurdles? And how can we improve the plan moving forward? And so, it, it's evolutionary. It's ever changing. It just never needs to be sort of this stagnant, you know, process at large. So I'd like to, yes, go right ahead, sir.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Yeah, fire away.
Before the question, I also want to clarify why I asked the question.
Yeah.
We, we are a public school, and there's certainly difference between public school and private school. The question is that, you know, do you know or understand how private school has set their goals and mission, vision differently from public school? And the reason I ask this question is that we have so many public schools, the United States, right? And we don't really want every school exactly from the same cookie cutter, right? There is some personality with every school. And that's really defined by the community. If we don't have community, we don't have a school, right? So with that said, I think the public school should take that personality issue into, you know, consideration as setting goals and missions. And that's why I asked the question, you know, do you understand with the private school and public school, how they set these things, you know, differently, in a different mentality or process and so on?
So, you know, just for clarity, I'll be honest with you, you know, whether it be, you know, higher ed, college level, or private schools, even charter schools, process is process. It's the ingredients that creates the originality. And so when you talk about sort of the district at large and the community at large and capturing sort of the uniqueness, that's the ingredients that goes into the process that creates the unique product. And so when you look at process, generally charter schools, public schools, private schools, higher ed, they use, you know, very similar processes, and they get together to decide, how are we going to plan this out and what works best for us? And again, my job here today is just to give you guys food for thought. So when you go into that planning, and how do we best incorporate the board in all of this, and how do we capture that uniqueness and the needs of our district and the positive aspects of what we're trying to accomplish, how does that get articulated in the goals? And a lot of what you're doing currently, you know, I think fits the bill. It just requires a little bit of tweaking, as I said, you know, looking forward. You know, what is working well for us? And then, you know, what do we want to do different in the future? And part of that's what I would like to explore, you know, just for a little bit right now. And I want to give you guys a little bit of hands-on experience, but I want to give you guys food for thought. And where I like to start this conversation off, and this thing's a piece of junk, by the way, so I got to go this route, is that, you know, when it comes to school improvement planning, creating something like, you know, the success plan that you have, is that really when you look at the responsibility of the board, what is your job in terms of governance? Your job is to steer the ship. You need to understand the direction in which you're heading, right? Part of that comes through the establishment of that vision, so you have an idea of where you want to go. But more importantly, how are you going to get there? And that's part of the board's responsibility in steering that ship. But in doing so, you want to ensure that you are getting input from your various stakeholders, not only internal and external, and that can be done through survey. In the process that created the success plan, you brought in a lot of people's voices that got distilled down into that very nice success plan. Moving forward, that's what you want to consider. How do we continue to do that? Because what I heard from you, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that that was an important component. It helps create the transparency, but more importantly, it creates ownership. When people feel like they've had a voice in the process, they're more likely to support it. Not only are they likely to support it, but you're more likely going to see the results in which you desire. And so part of that is that, you know, moving forward, how do we best do that? Now, the thing that I like to point out here is that looking at the school board, you guys operate at what's called the 30,000-foot view. I've heard it called the 20,000, 10,000, it doesn't matter, it's all the same. When we say you operate at the 30,000-foot view, what is your view? Your picture is on what?
The entire district.
It's on the entire district. You're looking at the big picture. Through the goal-setting process, in terms of the board's involvement, you want to ensure that you're operating at, you stay at the 30,000-foot view, because there are very well-intended board members who descend, and before you know it, you get caught into the weeds. The way that I like to discern this, the board's responsibility is to define the what? What is the district attempting to accomplish? That gets articulated in the, in the goal statement. It's broad, it's visionary, but there's substance behind it that defines the work that needs to get done. You then hand it off to the superintendent, who figures out how to get that done. In the process that you have currently, that's working at the building levels to develop those smart objectives and the actionable plan. And that's really where those two domains operate. But they work in tandem, right? Now, it's important to point out here that there are different types of goals, and I'm not going to really define those. There's board goals, they're specific to you. There's district goals, the district at large. And then there's superintendent goals. Those goals tend to get extracted from your district goals. But what I want to talk about really quickly is just to define the difference between a goal and an objective. And I think it's important just to spend a couple minutes, because too often, we use these synonymously. There is a difference, especially when we're talking about a process like we are today. And I use a very simple, you know, explanation here. And I think at some time or another, we've all decided, you know what, I need to lose weight. So say, for example, that I decide that I need to lose 50 pounds. How can I achieve my goal? Well, there's different avenues, right? I can diet, I can exercise. But we all know diet and exercise programs don't work the same for everybody. So I would go out and I would seek professional advice, maybe see a dietitian, work with a personal trainer, maybe see my doctor. I'm going to take all of that and put it into some type of plan of action in order for me to lose my, to lose my weight. So how do I know if I'm making progress? Well, it's quite simple. I'm going to use quantitative and qualitative data. I can step on a scale that can determine whether or not I'm working in the right direction. People can tell me, you're looking better. My clothes are looser. So I'm going to use data to help monitor my progress. Bada bing, check me out. I'm ready for the beach. But here's my question to you. All right? I set a goal to lose 50 pounds. Was that really my goal, or was I working towards something much larger? And if so, what is it? What was I really working towards? What are your thoughts?
Objective.
There you go. I wanted to lose weight, but to create and maintain a healthy lifestyle. That's my goal. So what then is losing 50 pounds? What does that become? That's actually a what?
Objective.
That's an objective. When you look at, in terms of applying this scenario to a school district, right, the board works with the superintendent. Through a process, you create the large goals for the district. That's done by soliciting input from your community, and then using that input to determine what are our priorities, and then what is it that we are trying to accomplish. From there, it gets handed off to the superintendent. There are boards and a workshop that will be part of it, but really, this is something that is driven by the superintendent and administrators, in which to create the, the smart goals. You currently have the practice, and I think this is a great practice, and that's my opinion, because I've seen it work in a lot of other districts, where you have the building level teams create that plan of action, and then gets reported to the board. And so it becomes this strategy, and then you have your action plan. And as Dr. Blanch pointed out, that's what you currently have. So when you look at goals versus objectives, they work in tandem to produce results. Goals is really that vision of what you're trying to accomplish. The objectives becomes the how. And again, as I pointed out, the board's domain is the goals, the superintendent's domain is the objectives. And we got to work within those respective fields. Now, that does not mean that the board cannot have input into those smart goals. And through the process of developing the goals, you define what you deem to be the critical work that needs to be invested within the school district. That's also, and I'll explain how that works. Question?
Goals, so goal setting.
Yep.
You differentiate those from mission and vision, too, right?
So, yeah, typically, your mission very rarely ever changes. Sometimes, through a strategic planning initiative, you decide we want to revisit it. But, you know, your mission is why you exist. Vision does have a shelf life, tends to be no more than 10 years, and in my opinion, 10 years is too long. Through a process, you can decide, we need to visit our vision. The vision is the collectiveness. But the goals themselves, and I'll explain this in a little bit more different, and they are very similar to what you have, they're visionary in nature. If we were to accomplish everything we wanted to within this area, what would that look like? That's your job. That's your job as the board, to define what it is you're trying to accomplish. How it gets done, again, that falls into the superintendent's domain, so you're working in that collaborative fashion and it's supporting one another. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there's a...
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, really what we want to do in this process is really kind of cross the bridge between where we are right now, where do we want to be in the future, how do we get there? And in that process, how do we best monitor that action? Really, what we're trying to do is to not, you know, try to make random acts of improvement, but to streamline our resources, right? We don't have unlimited resources, we have very limited. Therefore, we need to determine where are the areas that we would like to see growth? And then, how do we direct those resources and efforts so we streamline that process? So in the, and through that, we're not only fulfilling our mission, but we're working towards our collective vision, and as I indicated along the way, we're making sure that we're moving in the right direction. One of the things that you need to do in terms of improvement planning, you got to determine where is our point of access. Now, looking at here, these are the main components of an improvement plan. Again, you have your mission, why we exist, vision, what do we hope to be in the future? We have our district goals, we have our SMART goals, we have an action plan, and then we have a feedback loop in which we're ensuring that reporting is coming back to the board and we're monitoring that process. When we look at this, you already have a mission and you already have a vision. Where the access point is, is really kind of revisiting your district goals. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, you're at that point right now where the board really didn't have a voice. There might be other areas that are not included in the current plan, and so, we need to revisit those district goals. Once those are carved out, the next step then becomes the SMART goals, which then leads to the action plan, which then leads to the reporting. But generally, when you assess this, you want to determine what is it we're trying to accomplish. And maybe, maybe five years down the road, you might decide, we need to revisit our mission, and that sort of changes your approach and what you try to do.
Quick question.
Sure, fire away.
So, is it my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, our mission and vision, I think, have been, were established at least 10 years ago? Is that correct? Or have they been updated since then?
No, 10, 10 years ago with, you know, subtle adjustments along the way, and the most recent would be last summer, when we spent some time and got some feedback from, you know, the board.
We did make some changes to it.
Subtle, subtle language changes, really has much of a reconfirmation to it. The buckets, the three buckets, were still resonating with folks and things like that too, so.
Okay, that, just checking on that.
Yeah. You got me nervous. You said 10 years, I'm like, wait, I thought they just revisited them, so I'm glad to hear that that was the case.
Yeah, minor, minor changes, not like a start from scratch.
And that's typically what happens. And I've led those workshops, you know, where we come in and we look at our mission, is it still viable? Does it still state why we exist? Sometimes, we make some language changes, the vision might be, you know, sometimes we scrap it entirely, but other times, it just takes some updating. And it sounds like you guys have already done that. But when you look at the steps, and this just kind of outlines them in terms of what you need to do in creating, you know, an actionable plan, in your case, your success plan. Obviously, there's the planning phase that comes in. You then would go out with a stakeholder survey, either that or you would conduct workshops, because it's important to elicit that information, both externally and internally. The next step, if you were to choose to do this, but you guys have already done this, is to take a look at your mission and vision. This does not have to happen every year. You then look at data, because data is going to help inform you in terms of how are we performing as a district. Question?
Just a quick question, Jamie. We're talking overall here as the board, so what you're outlining here...
I'm outlining all the steps.
Well, I just want to be clear. The steps that you're sharing are the steps that this board and the trustees are supposed to be enacting, correct?
So this is part of the planning to plan.
Correct.
So this is something that, you know, as I said, you need to identify, what is our access point? And again, you know, based upon the work that's already been done, you're, you're sort of accessing at the district goal level, because you want to revisit those, determine, you know, are they still viable? Are there areas that we missed? Maybe make tweaks to the current ones.
I'm just trying to clarify that it's the role of the trustees on the board, because I think that there's a little role confusion sometimes as trustees, and so that's helpful.
So, yes. This is something that you would work in collaboration. I don't recommend that this be solely taken upon by the board, and I haven't gotten to the point yet, but I'll jump the gun.
Amazing.
What you may want to consider doing is to create a planning committee. On a planning committee, you can determine who's on the planning committee, because they're going to plan, obviously, to do the next plan. That planning committee would determine the timeline of how are we going out with a survey? When are we going to create a time for us to get together to review data? You know, the steps that are involved. A lot of times, the planning committee, I don't recommend more than 14, and I think you might be personally, 14 is a very high number. You don't want too many cooks in the kitchen, but that would be an opportunity for board members, administrators, teachers, and community members. And even if you wanted to bring students on there, because it's a great opportunity for them, to incorporate that planning committee. They would be the ones to sort of take this and develop sort of at-large, a little bit of a timeline and work on that planning phase. These are just all the steps that are involved, if that makes sense. And I'll kind of get a little bit more into where does the board operate within all of this.
Yeah, just some clarity on that, because then I'm confused by the previous discussion, which is the 30,000-foot view. And if, what Lindsay was asking, is this, are you outlining the steps of the board here? And then I get confused with seven, eight. Those seem like...
Yeah, no, these are just all the steps that are involved.
... implement, like, you know, just clarity on that.
Yeah, these are just all the steps that are involved in school improvement planning. We're going to take the next step in a minute here to get down a little bit more into roles.
Not the board's role necessarily.
Yes.
Correct, yes. And I'll explain that as we kind of wade through this. But those were great questions, because I could see, you know, a little bit of confusion around that. So, as I said, you know, first thing you want to do, and this is sort of a board-level conversation that you have with your superintendent, how are we going to plan to plan? What is our parameters in doing so? Are we going to create a planning committee? If that makes sense, then yes. If not, is this the work that the board is going to undertake to create sort of the action steps through the planning? And again, you would work in collaboration with your superintendent. You want to determine, are we going to do a stakeholder dive? And again, this is some, I'm sorry, stakeholder survey, and this is a board-level conversation, all right? You work collaboratively with your superintendent. Do we want to go out? If so, that then becomes an internal job. You define the what? What do we need? A stakeholder survey. How are we going to do that? That's your superintendent. So that's where the two domains operate, but that's how you work together in a tandem line. And again, the timeline, you know, what's realistic for us in developing all of this? And if you plan, if you designate it to a committee, they're going to designate the timeline. If it's the board and superintendent, then you work collaboratively in order to do that. And there are boards who just hand it off to the superintendent and say, you come back to us with a plan. Because that's part of what the superintendent would do, is then work with the administrative cabinet. So there's different avenues that you can consider. Committee, board works with superintendent, board works with superintendent administrators, create a plan, or board delegates to superintendent administrators to develop sort of the plan and bring it back to the board. So those are different avenues that you guys could consider and what would work best for you. But ultimately, the board will have a role in the development of the goal process. So as I said, you want to consider committee, I've already gone through this. No more than 14 is realistic, and I think 14 is too much, but you definitely want to have it a mixture of different stakeholder groups. What I've seen some boards do is they're going to invite business owners within the community into the mix, because I think getting their input is also very important. It's great if you have business owners that actually live in the district that you may want to reach out to, because then you get, you know, more bang for your quote-unquote buck.
Who have you seen, who runs the planning committee?
So the planning committee you would designate is an ad hoc committee. This would be board-created, you would do it through resolution at your board meeting, but beforehand, just like any committee, you would identify the composition, meeting frequency, and what is the charge. You would then designate, you know, a chair to the committee that would help coordinate and run, and all of that would get reported back. So you run it very similar to, however, except it's an ad hoc committee, meaning that it just serves its purpose, and once it's done, it dies.
So would it, would a chair typically be an administrator or a board member?
The board can decide who would be the best to chair it. Some prefer that the superintendent chair it, or an administrator, some prefer a board member. Really, you want to decide who would be the best person to fill that, and that's how you would determine the chair.
Okay.
So, once you have, if you go down the planning, again, I'm going sort of step-by-step, and through the process, I define who does what through this. So you got your plan to plan, and again, I gave you different ways in which you can do that. Say, for example, you did hand it off to a committee, all right? The committee then would decide, are we going to go out with a stakeholder survey? Sometimes, the stakeholder survey gets delegated to the superintendent administrators to develop. Other times, it goes through the committee, but ultimately, it's going to go out through the district. When you're going out with a stakeholder survey, again, I already pointed this out, you have internal and you have external stakeholders, you want to ensure that everybody has the ability to do it. Generally, what a lot of districts do today is they go through electronic survey. You guys, do you guys have thought exchange by any, do you guys have that? It's expensive.
Yeah, no, not right now.
No. But there are free ones, like Google Docs. I've worked with Google Docs before, it's a wonderful platform, and there's other ways that you could go out. I think you guys did yours, what, SurveyMonkey?
Correct.
You could even use SurveyMonkey if you want to, right? But when you go out with a stakeholder survey, you need to determine what is it that we're asking our community for? That goes back to understanding what elements of the plan are we developing. If, and I use this as the example, and this is not something I believe you guys are going to do, but if you were going to revisit your mission and vision and develop district goals, you want to ensure that you have questions that are aligned to elicit the responses that will then be used to help you to create that plan. So I just gave you sort of a smattering of what I stole off of other surveys that I've seen districts go out with. I have a list of other questions, if you are interested, I'm more than happy to supply those to you. So you would do your stakeholder survey. When you do the stakeholder survey, I always ask boards to keep in mind, or the planning committee to keep in mind, that you want to keep it short and succinct. If you've ever filled out a survey, I know for me personally, if I know that there's more than, you know, 15 questions, I don't want to do it. It's, you know, it turns me off. Make sure you have the appropriate number of questions to allow people to want to take it, not only want to take it, but will actually take it. So that's just some things you want to take into consideration. The other thing too, is that you want to have clear messaging. If you're going out with a community survey, an email to people sometimes isn't the best way to do it. What I encourage districts to do is to tap into their community networks. Find out where your social hubs are, all right? If there are churches within your community, for example, contact them and have them make the announcement to their, you know, parishioners, that we're looking for people to fill out this survey. You know, go to, you know, other community centers, you know, retirement centers if you had it. Try to get the work, the word out. The other thing too, is that you may want to take extra steps to get those underrepresented people within your community. Those folks, you tend to never hear their voice, maybe figure out a way to reach out to them, and sometimes, all it takes is just really a personal message to them. Can be a little bit time-consuming, it's up to you whether or not that's the appropriate route to go. Generally, when the surveys are open, they tend to stay open for about two weeks. You don't want to linger out there much longer than that, but you want to do the prep work upfront to make sure you get the messaging out there, you get the survey out there, because you want people to fill it out. Not only do you want people to fill it out, you want to get as many people to fill it out as you possibly can. So, mission and vision, I'm going to skip over. The data dive would come next. I don't really prefer the word data dive at the board level. Really, data dives happen internally. That's what your administrators do, that's what your teachers do. I like the phrase data tread at the board level. What I mean by a data tread is you're understanding sort of the district as a whole. How are we performing? How are our subgroups performing? Are there's areas that presents opportunities that we can improve upon? If so, through the data, what might they be? Now, with data, there's a lot of things that you can do. I'm not going to read, you know, all of this, because I don't want to insult your intelligence, but, you know, what can data do for you? It can really help you understand the district at large. Really, there's four main types of data that you're going to take a look at. Number one is achievement data, number two is your demographics, number three, your programs that you have, as well as your processes, but also perceptual data. And through a survey that you give, a lot of times, you get perceptual data. Now, the caveat to perceptual data, and I say this very facetiously, okay? And I don't want to offend anybody, but, you know, you got to be cautious of what are dubbed the CAVE people. Are you familiar with the CAVE acronym? Stands for Citizens Against Virtually Everything. Doesn't matter what you do, you did it wrong. That decision you made, it was terrible, all right? The thing about CAVE people is that they tend to be the smallest segment of your population, but they have the loudest voice. Now, yes, it's sort of a negative to call them quote-unquote CAVE people, but sometimes, the CAVE people do have a legitimate voice. And it's important at the board and administrative level that we listen to them, to determine whether or not their input is very credible. But the thing about perceptual data, and I have seen this time and again, sometimes what happens is, and this happens at the board level, I was down at Smitty's Diner, and I overheard some community members talking about this problem within the district. Next thing you know, it's a problem. Well, how do we know? All right? Perceptional data, what you want to do is if you're gathering data, you got to walk into it with a certain lens, okay? You can't jump to the conclusion that because somebody says it's a problem or a major concern, it actually is. As a board, you investigate through the appropriate avenues, which is designating your superintendent to look into those areas that you're seeing repetitively to determine whether or not there's validity behind it. So that's just the cautionary tale of using perceptual data. As I said, use qualitative and quantitative, that's the data component, but also using people's thoughts and feelings about the district, because that's extremely important. I'm going to skip over this, this is just a little lesson about how we use data. But the whole point here is that, using that survey, the qualitative and quantitative, you want to create a visual picture of the district. You want to understand where are we currently? Not only where are we currently, but what opportunities do we have to make improvements? And so, the next step of the process is, what then is going to fall within the board's domain? You plan to plan, you go out with a survey, you then look at some data, you then have a workshop which would be done in public, and it's up to you who you want to bring into the workshop. Typically, what I recommend at the bare minimum, it's the board, and it's going to be the superintendent and administrative cabinet, and then you can determine what other key personnel are we going to bring in the room to create district goals. Now, a lot of times, it's either we're going to review the previous goals and use the information that we have in order to update and modify this plan, and that tends to be that part of continuous improvement. Before you get in that workshop, you would have already gone over the community survey, because it's a time saver, you don't want to spend all day in a workshop looking at community survey data, all right? You would have looked at data presented from the superintendent. Now, the thing about the data piece too, some boards decide that we don't need this. We get presented data on a regular basis. We have a great understanding. That may not be a step that you need to invest time in, but that's, that would be part of what you at the board and the committee would need to figure out. The other piece too, that I recommend you do before this workshop, and I'm going to thank you guys, and here's why. In my conversations, I found that you guys use a SOAR analysis. Strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results. For years at the association, we've done a SWOT analysis. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Years ago, when I explored these different, because they generally work towards the same, but they're devised a little bit differently. Before, I always preferred the SWOT. But you guys have now turned me on to the SOAR, the appreciative inquiry. And the reason being is because I misunderstood what the SOAR can actually do. I always thought the SOAR didn't capture your quote unquote weaknesses. What I really like about the SOAR model is that it reframes it into a positive. Meaning that what area are we not doing so great at that presents an opportunity for growth and change? And once I understood that, so thank you for that. It was great because that gives me a lot of food for thought. What I would recommend you do before you get into this is that you use the community survey, you use the data, and then you use the SOAR analysis. And I'll explain why you're going to do that, okay? So what the SOAR analysis is going to do is that you're going to take your qualitative and you're going to take your quantitative, and it gets distilled into a manageable document. Because now you're going to use this SOAR analysis in order to create your district goals. So I'll give you an example of how this gets done. And who would fill out the SOAR analysis? That would be for you to determine. Generally, again, it's the board. All right, it's going to be the administrators. It's going to be the superintendent. And it's going to be other key personnel. Remember, you've already got your stakeholder input through a survey. You're then going to incorporate that into your SOAR analysis. And again, this becomes a manageable document. So here's an example of what a SOAR analysis could encapsulate. Before I do that, the other thing too, that I just wanted to go back and just quickly point out here, is that when you have people fill out the SOAR analysis, you need to have guiding questions. And part of what I did in examining this is I had to determine, okay, how do I frame each one of these categories to fit the world of education and to elicit the responses that will help us in the process? So strengths, what is it that we do really well, that we build on? Opportunities, what are external challenges? Or things that the district can piggyback on that will help us? And I like this, what are our stakeholders asking from us? I think that's an important piece. Aspirations, what do we care deeply about? How do we make a positive impact on staff and students and their outcomes? What do we want to accomplish or become in the future? So again, this is a little bit more visionary. The results piece doesn't necessarily need to be the specific measurements. But it can be things of how do we know that we are succeeding? What's going to guide us in that understanding? What outcomes will demonstrate we have achieved success? So for example, if we aspire to have enrichment courses, right? How do we know if we're moving in that direction? Well, we're going to use enrollment. Are we getting kids that are signing up for it? And that could be something as simplistic as that. So really quickly here, here is just something that a SOAR analysis, and this is fictitious. I pulled this off of just ones that I found online from other districts. If there's any similarities to your district, it's just mere coincidence. All right, so strengths, you got teachers, updated tech, innovative teaching practices, restorative practices have been implemented. What are opportunities? Well, there's untapped wraparound services. We know mental health is a big issue that we're trying to tackle. Maybe there's some mental health facilities that can help us in that capacity. We have an influx of ELL students, right? We know we want to work over our opportunities to have this diverse learning community. That presents a great opportunity if we have an influx of people with diversity. That creates great opportunities. You know, we need to replenish our funds. What do we want to become? What are our aspirations? We want 100% graduation rate. All right, how do we know? And you can take a look here. So these are the types of things that a SOAR analysis attempts to capture. When you come together in a workshop, you are going to be primarily looking at the SOAR analysis. What I like to do when I facilitate these is I usually will have the superintendent review very quickly to refresh everybody's minds what was captured on the community survey. You then would work in small groups. And what you would do is you would review the SOAR analysis. What I tend to have them do is you would go through that analysis and you would highlight repetitive themes or issues that are crucial, that you feel within a success plan, we as a board, we as a district, need to dedicate time, attention, and resources. This needs to be articulated. So you identify through that SOAR analysis what you believe are those priorities for the district. Once you have done that, and here's the caveat, I should back up here a second. As you're going through that SOAR analysis, you need to take a page from Patrick Lencioni. That if we make everything important, then nothing becomes important. I usually give participants in a workshop a highlighter to highlight the SOAR analysis. And I tell them, I don't want you to be like a seventh grader reading something with a highlighter because everything is highlighted, except for maybe two words. Always made me laugh. What you then do is you then would identify, based upon the SOAR analysis thematically, what are those areas that we could classify that information? What are our goal categories? Now, because you have an existing success plan, part of this process would be to look at those. Are they still appropriately labeled? And I think that there would be apprehension to change that, or you could modify them. But I think that part of that would be, do we continue to carry these on? But more importantly, are there other categories that we missed? For example, our fiscal stewardship. Is that an area that we missed that needs to be encapsulated in this plan? So I just gave you an example. If I looked at the SOAR analysis that I presented to you, you may decide, you know what, here are three categories that we could generate. The way that I look at goal categories, it's like walking into a department store. How do I know where things are? It's easy because they're in departments, right? That's what you're doing in this process. You're just really shining a spotlight on a big area that you were then going to focus the lens down in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. The next step of the process that I generally would lead groups through is then you take the SOAR analysis and you would classify that information into the various goal categories. So now we're creating priorities. What is it that we want to sort of capitalize upon? Where are those areas for growth and improvement? So you would categorize them out. This is the work that the board again does with administrators. If you so choose to, there are some boards who don't want administrators to be part of it. And again, that's part of the process that you would figure out. The next step would be then to articulate, what is it that we're trying to achieve? This is how we get from all that information, classifying the priorities to create a goal category with a goal statement. And I just kind of threw one together. To graduate all students who are prepared to succeed in a diverse world by challenging and supporting each individual so they will reach their full potential. That becomes your goal statement. That is what you are trying to accomplish. When I've done workshops like this, people will say, well, Jamie, that's a great goal statement. My first response is, of course it is, because I wrote it. But then they want to challenge me. Jamie, that's great, but it's nothing but fluff. I wholeheartedly disagree. This is the worst analogy in the world. It's the only one that I've ever come up with. And if you come up with one better, I'm going to steal it and say I came up with it. And I did come up with this one because it's so terrible. All right, a word in the English language is only a word because it has a what? Don't tell me vowel. It has meaning. It has a definition. This has meaning. How does it have meaning? Because we've defined what needs to be done. We have attached to this all the work from the community survey, looking at data, taking that qualitative and quantitative, and we distilled it down into the SOAR analysis. And we've figured out what is it that we need to lend our time and attention. Now we have a statement of what we're trying to accomplish. This is the work of the board. This is where you operate. You create these goal statements and you identify the priorities. This then gets handed off. And again, this is the what? The next step of the planning process, and I'm not going to go too far into this, becomes the how. The how is the role of the superintendent. How do they work in tandem together? And again, just to point this out before I get you working in some small groups, because I want you to experience this a little bit here, is that again, school board establishes direction for the district. You define the what. That gets done through the goal setting process. Once that happened, the how gets handed off to the superintendent. And again, you have a committee structure, meaning that you have that internal structure already in place. And what I understand is that you like how that's currently operating because it gives a voice to the teachers and the staff. That gets handed off to them. They understand what the goal is. They get handed what the priorities are that identified. And then they translate the SMART objectives to align to the goals and to align to the priorities that you, the board, have identified. And then through that process, again, they have the latitude to also define that work even further. So now we have a happy marriage between the board's role, as well as the superintendent's role, and working in that committee structure. Part of what they are going to do is they need to plan systemically. All right, they need to have strategic intent. So for example, part of the process that gets done internally is say, for example, you at the board level determine kids need to have proficiency in technology, not only knowledge, but skills, right? How do we get that done? That's part of what the administrators would do. And sometimes it takes backwards planning. Well, one-on-one laptops. Kids want to be proficient in technology. They need computers. Is that alone going to lend itself to proficiency? The answer to that is no. But what we do need is technology-based learning, that real-world application. But are all teachers able to do that? The answer is no. And so you also have to have professional development that is aligned. This is planning with strategic intent. This is how, again, you at the board level help point direction internally to help develop a plan that all comes together. What happens next, and this is an example. I really like how, I'm going to steal yours, by the way, if you don't mind, in my future presentations, because I like how you have your, I stole this one. I worked with you in Adila Valley before. This is what they came up with. They have a links team, teachers, administrators, and the superintendent who developed the actionable plan. This is just what theirs looked like. And again, this is all aligned. Really quickly, before we move to the next phase here, because I know you guys are probably tired of listening to me speak, but I wanted to lay out, and I'm going to take some questions in a minute, is that you need to have progress reporting. And the way that this happens is we take a page from the corporate world called cascading goals, meaning that goals are created at the top level with input from everybody, but then they're deconstructed throughout the system. And how that happens is that you have building level and department level goals. And that's how they're all aligned with one another. But you want to ensure that that information is coming back. So getting to that transparency piece that we talked about before, one of the things that you need to consider is creating that feedback loop. Generally, what we recommend is that you look at your calendar at large, that you have a presentation and planning calendar specific to you, the school board. And you already have something like that in place. You would then determine throughout the year, when are we, the board, going to get input on the progression of those goals? Who's going to come to us and talk about data points and how we're moving in that direction? You would have that pre-planned out. The superintendent figures out who is the best person internally to come and present that information to you, the board. So now you're fulfilling that monitoring piece. The other component too, that I would suggest if you're not already doing this, as part of the superintendent evaluation process, this would be an informal, and I stress that word informal, component. What a lot of boards do is they meet with a superintendent. A lot of them like to do it quarterly. At a bare minimum, they do it midway through the year as an informal check-in. How is the year progressing? How are we working towards our goals? What challenges have we experienced? Did something like COVID derail us? All right, this is good conversation to have. You don't want to wait until the end of the year to all of a sudden get a report and find out you weren't on target because of X, Y, and Z. So now the board is better apprised of that and allows you to better monitor throughout the year. And that even adds to filling out the superintendent evaluation. So I just gave you a lot, and I understand that. And I don't want you to be scared because I just dumped all this information in your lap because you have access to me. And you also have this on video to go back. And I know all of you are going to watch it time and again and rewind it and bring the kids popcorn, it's going to be awesome. Nobody wants to see me, trust me. So I'm going to pause here because I know I dumped a lot. All right, questions before I want to move you into the next phase here? So I did see your hand.
So the mid-year quarterly check-ins, is that done in public meeting or is that?
Depends on the nature of the conversation. If you're talking at large about district goals, that's going to be public. If you're talking about specific goals related to the performance evaluation of the superintendent, that, again, that gets done in the executive session. Now, what I suggest you do is if you're moving in that direction, you understand what you want to talk about with the superintendent. You call one of our attorneys at NISBA at no cost whatsoever. Is this open session or can this be done in an executive session? I always advise just getting some advice beforehand. Other questions?
So I want to get back to the board in tasking the district of going out to the community to collect feedback, which we did beautifully this year, right? So the district went out, they collected great feedback. How do you ensure that the feedback we're collecting from the entirety of the district, including internal and external stakeholders, addresses our overarching goals or our aspirations, vision, and mission of the district? Because to your point of the cave people, right? That might or may not share information that's useful. There is a vision for the district and a mission for the district. So how do you make sure that we're aligned in getting the feedback towards those specific vision and mission statements that help then drive the board's setting of the goals?
Sure, I mean, and again, the purpose of the community survey is to get input into what they would like to see in terms of growth for the district. But there are districts, and I don't remember if it's on here or not, they ask questions very broadly. And again, I don't know if I have it on here or not. Just basic questions of, do you feel education within the district has improved or declined? And they can kind of get a sense of, what is the perception of? People feel like that the education's happening here? So again, before you go out with the survey, you want to make sure, what is it that we're eliciting from our community? What is it that we want to collect from them? And if you want to know, are we doing a good job or not? You're going to phrase some questions in there to help guide. You know, others will say, they'll create sort of a list of topics. Out of these lists, what are the most important areas for our district to focus in upon? They might have an open-ended question. You know, what do you feel are the most important issues impacting students today? Whether it be school-wise. And again, you guys would work with the superintendent to determine what's appropriate and what kind of information you would like to solicit.
So just the data set we have, the last two questions on that survey really lead to the strengths. Talks about what things are going well in the schools and then asks for opportunities for community things. What are some things you'd like to see existing in the district in the next five years? And how would you like to be involved? So the administrative team spent some time, a few weeks ago, going through that data set. The plan is then to have that broken down to the buildings so the buildings could have that building-based conversation, then open that up to community, for community to come in and have that conversation with those results and kind of digest that work. And we started at the board table last meeting in June, just initially looking at the high-level data set. So that's like the time, like you said, so. That's the process we're looking at for the end of the school year, summer, or fall, so that when we get ready for '23, '24, that energy can be refreshed as we talked about here. And I think we initially looked at possibly a December date to have our team come back together again. And now we will have completed not just the survey, but also those focus groups.
Yeah.
And then that data set would be there. So as you mentioned numerous times here, I think that would be something like, listen to the conversation, be interested in kind of following up with that as being our next step. I know we've got a little time left, just saying, I see that kind of being that next very natural step for us to hopefully be yourself, Jamie, and just kind of processing through that with the SOAR example and walk through. And that's how we kind of debrief the data set too. And say, okay, what strengths do you see here and what opportunities? And so it just presents itself. And we're very much looking forward to, building's going to do it first with their faculty. And then they're going to open up their building-level community conversations.
Yeah, and so you kind of have a process in place where you're utilizing that SOAR. And so maybe you want to tap into that more. You know, what I gave you here is just one path. And you need to determine what's currently working for you that you like. And then how do we make the adjustments? So now the board has more of an active role. And my opinion is that you work with the existing process, but then you modify it where the board is the one creating those district goals in collaboration with the board and superintendent, utilizing that input to guide your thought and processes. And once that has happened, then it gets handed off to the next step of the phase, which becomes more of the planning phase internally.
Yeah, so I guess, and one thing that I would like to point out, because I think it's great hearing this whole process and especially this community involvement piece because I think that's one of the things that we've been struggling with. And like the partnership survey that went out was a great start if we are talking about actually moving into this process. I think we need to examine if that, because that wasn't developed with board input. And making sure that we're capturing everything that we needed from the community. And also, that was just distributed by email. So I liked that point you talked about, about really doing that extra legwork to make sure that you're tapping into the entire community and reaching those people that may not be picking it up in the email or may not be responding in the email. And how do you let them know how important it is to respond? So I think if we're going to move forward with this process, it would be important to maybe revisit the community survey a little bit deeper and more comprehensive.
It's all about creating a strategy of how do we best reach those individuals? And again, the downside, and I hate to say this, is that there will still be people who don't fill it out because they feel that you should have came directly to their door and filled it out with them. But as long as you take those steps and you put, and that goes a long way for your district. Wow, you know, the district really wants to gather our input. Other questions on the process at large? All right, so what I'd like to do here is I'm going to just shift our attention because I want to give you guys an opportunity to think about how this process actually works out. And I know we don't have a ton of time left, but I think we got a good understanding of sort of the next steps. And we're going to take a few minutes to do that here. We're actually going to do two things at once. I'm going to have you work within your groups. I'm going to have you guys create a SOAR analysis. And I'll back up to give you those guiding questions that I had before. And I'd like you as a group to kind of fill them out. And then we're going to do sort of a gallery walk to get a sense of what people are thinking of. And then take the next step of, what categories do you see thematically that is not already articulated? And again, this is just to give you a sense of how this process works, And again, this is just to give you a sense of how this process works, to get you thinking about the district at large and how the board then has that role. While we're filling out the SOAR analysis, I know you guys have listened to me ad nauseam and probably need to get up and take a break and just not listen to me for a minute, which I understand. So feel free to go to the bathroom. I'll give you guys roughly about maybe 10, 15 minutes to fill this out. I'm going to come around and give you guys one of these flip chart papers. If you could just create the four quadrants and then collectively as a group, fill it out. And then we will take a quick gallery walk, and then we will go to the next and last phase of today, which is to talk about the next steps and what you guys would like to do. And we'll make sure that we kind of capture that on paper, so you guys have some thoughts. Any questions about what I'm asking you?
The SOAR is specific to something in particular or just in general?
This is about the district. So we're in an open session, so we have full range to talk about the district and what you perceive. And again, I'll back up my slideshow so I can showcase those questions that will help guide the input of what I'm looking for. I'll come around and give you a marker in just a minute. So designate somebody with good handwriting perhaps in order to...
And it would be nice if we had...
I'll capture that information.
Thank you.
All right. So first and foremost, just a little bit of feedback in terms of the experience of, you know, filling out the SWOT analysis. You know, what are your thoughts on the experience of doing this?
SOAR.
It was SOAR. That's so funny. I know. It's SOAR to do the SOAR. So maybe just saying it facetiously, but, you know, what made it quote-unquote SOAR?
Relation you grew. You created, right?
The positivity.
Yeah.
It frames a positive. Yeah. I mean, you know, for me, that was part of what I had to grapple with. We're so, you know, this propensity to want to frame things in a negative, but instead of framing it as a negative, I like the opportunities. You know, what's not working well for us that presents an opportunity for growth? That took me a while to wrap my brain around. But if you're doing the SOAR analysis, again, what you want to do here is just kind of frame those guiding questions to elicit the responses that you're looking for.
I liked that aspirations was really the flip side of a weakness, right?
Yes.
You can see something is something that we're not really great at, or I aspire to do this better. And I think it all feeds back to our perspective and our, I hate to say it, but mindset.
Yeah.
Right? Like how we frame the work that we're doing. Are we going to bounce back or are we going to sort of flop and let ourselves live in this sad weakness place?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and I think that, you know, and that's what I like about the positive inquiry methodology here, is that it forces you to look at things from a more positive lens. You know, all too often, when you're having discussions, and when I've done SWOT analyses in the past, you know, to give the example, and this is not your graduation rate that I know of, I'm just making this up, but a lot of times it's that deflating of, geez, our graduation rate, you know, 82% is garbage, you know? But you reframe that, you know? What is our aspiration? Our aspiration is to have 100% graduation. We want every kid, and that's more of a motivational factor. So when it comes to this, you know, and again, there's different ways that you can think about creating the SOAR. Me personally, I find it to be a time saver to put out a Survey Monkey and have people individually fill it out. And the great thing about Survey Monkey is then it tabulates it all together for you and then to review it in a workshop setting with the notion that if there's things that need to be added that the SOAR didn't initially capture, you have the ability to do it. But I like the conversation that was taking place, because I think, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's really the value of coming together in a workshop to talk about the results. You have that open, honest conversation around, geez, what is this telling us? And then using this information and infusing that into a process to create those goals for you. So just out of curiosity, and again, we're just thinking off the top of our heads, part of what I would have you guys do, or that you guys can do, depending upon the road that you travel, first thing that you would want to do is you want to use the SOAR to look at the current goal categories that you have. Part of the conversation revolves around, do they still make sense? Are they still viable? Do they need to be updated? But the second question that you guys would consider is, what else are we missing? So just off the top of your heads, thematically, when you looked at this, if we were to classify this into those quote-unquote buckets, what might those buckets be? What are your thoughts on that? What are some of the categories we might carve out of what we just elicited in our short amount of time filling this out?
Communication.
Yeah. You could have a goal around communication. You know what? This is an area that we see for opportunity for growth. Therefore, you know, we need to, you know, create goals around communication.
Community involvement.
Yeah. Community engagement, community involvement. Right there's another area that we see as opportunity for growth for us. So we need to shine that spotlight. Anything else that you saw on there?
Recognition for excellence.
Oh, the recognition piece, you know, you might want to think. And part of the process, just so you know, is that, you know, when I tend to do this, we will then come to a consensus and generally have people work on groups. But, you know, what is the general consensus? Sometimes what we find is that we want it to be a goal category, but actually it's language that we can infuse into the goal statement itself. And, you know, I gave you the example and the one that I had up here of, if I just go really quickly here, I think I did this in here. So I had student achievement, curriculum, and instruction. Sometimes what happens in coming to consensus, we look at this and we have the conversation. Student achievement, well, we have to have curriculum and instruction in order to, you know, help student achievement. Does that belong in that category? And sometimes we decide that, you know what? We need to shine a specific spotlight on curriculum instruction, because that's an area we want to make sure that we're, you know, working towards. So that's part of the process of what you would undergo. Again, I like sending the SOAR analysis out before the workshop. You might decide a series of workshops. One of the workshops would be to come together and to fill out and have a conversation around the SOAR analysis, and then have another workshop where all that information is tabulated and then you use it. I mean, that's up to you guys. And so that leads me into sort of my next question here, which is, what are those next steps? What do we want to do in terms of tweaking this process? Now, my understanding is that you have sort of the goals and action plans in place for this academic year. And so realistically, what we want to think about is changing the process that would be implemented next year. And what I'm going to do is just quickly back up and just show all the steps that are part of the process, but more or less, we just want to focus on the ones that pertain to the board itself. So obviously, planning. When I mentioned the idea about a committee that would be in charge of creating a timeline that would be part of creating, if you deemed it necessary, a community survey. So let's start there in terms of next steps and process. Do you think that a committee is the best route to go? What are your thoughts?
Yes.
So I'm hearing a lot of yes.
For goal analysis.
Yeah. The committee would be tasked, and again, you need to create this through an official resolution at a board meeting. It becomes an ad hoc committee for the purpose of, you know, strategic planning or whatever you want to call it. You create the charge, meaning clear outlines of what you're asking that committee. You would then determine who you would want on that committee. And once that committee is fulfilled, it's charged, it would then get disbanded unless you wanted to create a standing committee, which then would oversee the process year after year. And that's something you guys can determine. So...
Chad, you got my key?
My question next, and again, we don't need to get down into the weeds of this because there's a lot more that you guys can think about. I gave you different compositions of what a committee could look like. One composition could be the board as a whole, working with the superintendent and others. Another composition could be, you have a minority of board members working in collaboration with admin and others. Just to get a general sense, we don't need to make a final decision. I just kind of want to field your thoughts out on what you guys are thinking at this moment.
The difference is, if it's a committee with less than four board members, it doesn't have to be a certain type of a public session, right? So the benefit, can you share a little bit about the benefits?
Sure. So here is our general thoughts, okay? There's a question mark of what committees need to be advertised as open meetings. Your audit committee, because it's made up of public officers, yes, that is subject to the open meetings law. Best practice, we highly recommend that all your board committees, and I'm not talking about district committees, that all your board committees be advertised and opened up. It's just a really good practice and it creates that transparency. But the difference being is that if you had a minority of board members, any decisions would have to be brought to the board at the whole for consideration, whereas opposed, that if it's the board as a whole, any decisions that you make are binding. And yes, then obviously, if it's a whole board, it's a public meeting, which is kind of a given. So what are we thinking?
Also, I have a question for...
Fire away.
More planning to plan.
Yep.
So with the structure of a minority of board members and other community involvement...
Yep.
This is still going to setting the goals. It's still the board itself that needs to... I mean, how does this come back to the whole board? I mean, how do we have that process to make sure that everyone is getting the appropriate input on the board when we actually make those decisions?
So if it's a minority of the board, you would run it like all your committees, you would have at your open meetings, just updates, board updates, you know, committee updates. You know, what is the committee working on? You know, you give the charge and direction to the committee of what you're asking them to do, and then they give you updates. And then any recommendations that come to the full board by a committee, it's the same as any committee. You can either accept it as a whole, you can accept it in part, or you can reject it. It's your decision.
That's the opportunity for everyone to discuss.
And that's where, you know, to be honest, some boards decide to do the minority because of the time commitment of bringing the full board together. So I just kind of, we don't need to, like I said, make a decision now. I just kind of wanted to feel out what your thoughts were and what you might, maybe you had a preference off the bat, but maybe we want to put this because this is a larger conversation and this is something you would discuss at an open meeting, which you would put on your agenda. So questions, thoughts?
I guess what I'm seeing is like an advantage of having the whole board involved is that everybody, everybody on the board has an equal voice.
Yeah.
But where it also could come into play is this could be a considerable amount of meetings and extra work, and it may be that the whole board doesn't want to be able to channel that way. And then it's also taking away from other committee work.
Yes.
So deciding whether we want to have representatives of the board and are entrusting them to do the work and share it back.
So why don't we do this? I think this is a larger conversation that we don't have time for today, but I do want to get your input. Yes?
Just one, do I hear that this type of committee, one of the advantages to cross actually from board to board, since board, you know, we have election every year, new board member comes every year, sometimes changes so fast. You could have this standing committee that is focused on long-term goal, mission, whatever, in, you know, transcending all from board to board.
I mean, you know, the purpose of the committee wouldn't be to create the goals.
Right.
You know, wouldn't be to update mission and vision. They're just the planning. And that's all that they would be...
I appreciate that, Jamie. I think that's a important part.
Yeah.
Because I think that can end fairly tight. I think it can be a representative group, just here's just the plan, here's the dates we're going to meet, here's the things we're going to do, and that just stops.
Exactly. And they bring the plan to the board. Here is what we want, here is the timeline. The board has input into that. Well, can we adjust the timeline, X, Y, and Z? And, you know, that's the way that realistically should work.
So we're talking about a planning committee that may or may not include the entire board, and then the plans that come out of that committee going to the board to then, the board creating the goals as a board.
Correct.
And then the goals given to the district that then takes those goals, turns them into smart goals and objectives that are enacted throughout the district. Is that like a...
So the planning committee just says, here's how we're going to elicit. And part of the planning committee, and this is the next question, and that follows in line with here, is one of the things that you want to consider, and this would be something from the charge, or it could be a recommendation of the committee, would be, do we need to have a community survey? Now, one of the things that I would encourage you to do is that you've already gone out with a community survey. I would encourage the board to take a look at that, have a conversation, and determine whether or not that provided us enough information. If you feel that, you know what, we need to go out with a community survey because the questions really didn't hit the mark of what we want to, you know, solicit, then your planning committee would be tasked with the development of a community survey. Now, my guess, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Blanch, that he would be part of this committee. But again, you know, the survey itself would be undertaken by the district. So that would be a question mark. And again, that would be something for you, the board, to decide as part of the process that you then delegate to the committee.
So just to clarify to your point.
Yep.
The goals that are set by the board are not set in the planning committee.
They are not set.
I'm just trying to get this like clearly on the record, so we're all talking about it, right? So the board is going to set the goals regardless of whether or not there is a planning committee. And then in the interest of transparency, would it then not make sense for us as a board to say, hey, let's make all of our committees open so that we can have as many board members who'd like to show up at those meetings? And that way, all of this information is shared widely. And to your point, Ife, if we wanted fluid sort of involvement on this committee, you know, maybe Heidi can come and I can't or whatever, and so it might be three people.
It depends on the issue at your time.
So...
Well, they want to participate.
Is that too much?
That might be another discussion.
Well, hang on.
Well, consistency, I think, if you're kind of feeling and you're working on next steps, if people are rotating through, somebody's there who wasn't part of the last conversation, and you lost somebody who was planning for them. So I can see the value of consistency.
On an annual basis, it should be consistent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But from the trustee perspective, I guess my point is that...
A year to year, yeah.
If we say, look, like you're the person on the committee, I'm making this up, but I want to step in, I don't ruin open meeting laws by all of a sudden being in this meeting because we've decided as a board that they're all open meetings and they're all going to be publicized and everyone can be there, right?
So here's a caveat, and I'm going to jump in real quick, and I didn't mean to stifle that, but I just want to make something clear, because I don't know if I'm misunderstanding what you're saying, so this is point of clarity. If I heard you correct, you would like a minority of board meetings, minority of board members, it would be the whole board.
That they like to be there.
So it has to be one or the other, because you can't have some days where there's a minority of board members and other days there's the full board. There needs to be...
Basically, the question is whether these committee meetings can open to board members that who are interested.
And that's what I was going to address next, is you need to be cautious. And here's why. If the committee is comprised through the charter and charge to be a minority of board members, but it is a public meeting, and then additional board members show up that are not part of the committee and become part of the conversation, you now have a full-fledged board meeting. So generally, what our attorneys have said is that, yes, it's an open meeting. If a board member who does not sit on a committee does want to observe, they can. You can have a board member provide information that is not sitting on a committee to the committee made up of a minority, but it's only to provide information and cannot participate in any discussion or any quote-unquote recommendation that would then go to the board, because if they do participate in that recommendation, you're actually creating a binding vote. So you just need to be careful.
But if you, I'm sorry, so just clarifying, thank you for this, because I didn't understand this before. So if the entire board, if it's not a minority, if it's majority board, does that mean that you cannot run the meeting unless you have quorum?
So, yes, you would have to make sure that there was a quorum of board members there. I mean, you know, let me double-check that with our attorneys to give you, you know, my gut feeling, and don't quote me on this, because I want to make sure that I go back. You know, my gut feeling, so there it is, right there. It's on, it's on record permanently.
This is no different than the policy committees on it, right? And that's a subset of the committee, people on it that are organizing it. But the entire board reviews and, as I say, in the policies in there, but you don't need the entire board.
Yeah, to be there.
And the like, sorry.
Sorry.
I mean, we're not, we're not setting the goals in that, in that thing there, but it's a subset of it. I feel the subset of the board in the committees is a lot more efficient.
Agreed.
In getting stuff done, especially if you're going out with the administration, you're going out with the community.
I just want to make sure that everyone has a place at the table if they'd like to show up.
Everybody should be able to have, you know, and be able to opine on that, you know, again, like our other committees, using the policy committee as an example.
So if it's all right, I was going to jump in for a second, just following this through. So minority community survey right now, done.
Yeah.
Yet to be assessed if it's exactly what we want it to be.
Yep.
And then really some of those next parts, we are going to do focus groups. And so the reality is when we, this planning theme committee will talk about timeline. I think that's the piece that that.
Yeah.
Get that group together real quick, dates, timelines, pieces in that work. The end, kind of working from, kind of the end in mind is, we're shooting right now for, I think it's a December 9th, Nancy, I think is the date, I can't remember, but is a meeting to ultimately get the data here, the focus group data, timeline all done, back to the collective board to get through all that data set then in December. Jamie hopefully will join us, and we'll then go through that data set. Okay, first determine, is there enough here? Is there enough information here from the community through focus groups, through the survey, through this work to then generate those goals that, that kind of the board and the administration team would be doing at that time? And so I think we've got a reasonable start, the data set there. We're going to get more through all these focus groups out in each building, community-wide and things like that. And then the board at that meeting on the front side will go through that SOAR analysis of the data set itself, and then knowing the other qualitative stuff and experiences you bring, then that's, we'll, we'll drive to that branch diagram, then what comes out of that is going to be those goals. So I think we're, we're right on target, right path. Then it builds for the 23, 24 adjustments. And like Jamie said, they're like, we don't have a specific fiduciary goals responsibility. These are all in the academic side of the house, I guess I would say. So certainly would see some of those other goals that will come out. But then minority would be great. I mean, it's a not, it's probably like a 60-minute conversation, just make sure we're on the same page and get dates going, and then we go ahead and survey results, we'll have those. We're going to start processing through district. The last piece, the board will do the, we looked at the quantitative piece, now we'll have the qualitative part there, will be that experience in December, and again, work with hopefully Jamie in December to walk us through. Then we're nice frame for after the New Year starts, people start getting into some of that thought about now, how do we incorporate these into the 23, 24 district goals? Thank you, Jamie.
Absolutely. So this would be, you know, incorporating the board this year, and then moving forward, it would be creating that planning, a planning committee for the purpose of planning process timeline. And if you decide that, you know, we want to do more focus groups, we want to do community surveys, that would all be run through your committee. And then the process-wise would be outlined very similar to what I said. You know, you would make sure that you use that data, you would conduct the SOAR analysis, and then you would come together in a workshop, and this is where the board as a whole would be here, along with administrators and other key personnel, to revisit the goals and then decide what are we missing? And that becomes a year after year sort of endeavor. What happens though is that after you guys create, you know, your broad goals, those generally have a shelf life. So what boards tend to do is not revisit those goals every year, but every other year, that's up for you, and that could be something you could task the planning committee to decide. Generally, what's going to change year after year are going to be your objectives, because I think we pointed this out before, change takes time. And when you're creating those goal statements, to actualize what you articulated in that goal statement is not going to happen within a year's time span, but the important piece is you're monitoring to make sure that you're moving in that direction. So with that, is there anything that we missed up here that you feel is important in terms of process and next steps?
Can I just add some, just to make sure I understand the theory?
Yep.
So if we're looking at the graphic you have up on the.
Yes.
Board here, the planning committee, which right now sounds like it's going to be minority board members plus administrators plus whoever else the board deems appropriate to be on this committee, will work on steps one and two, determining what other data resources we need to add to this discussion. And that, they will map out the timeline, the process, the members, and whatever, and they'll, they'll determine the steps in which we need, like focus group surveys, assess the current survey and change that for 22, 23 school year if it's deemed necessary. Then steps four, five, and six are full board, and that sounds like that's happening in December, right? Where the board will examine the data from the survey, from the focus groups, and whatever else the committee has determined is the appropriate, are the appropriate.
Well, this committee is not for this academic year, you're going to implement it for the next.
For next year, okay.
Correct.
Got it.
But yes, that would be.
For the next year.
Correct. Yes.
Committee is implemented this year for the 23.
For the next year.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so you already have this in place, and I think it's a little late in the game to try to.
Starts this year.
This year for next year.
Right, but, but we're modifying it this year to incorporate the board.
Yep.
And then next year, you would be 100% correct. The planning committee, you would figure out the stakeholder survey.
Yeah.
If the board's direction was, we want to revisit mission and vision, you would charge them with creating that as part of the process. The board would create the timeline to determine, you know, when is the board going to do the data dive? When are we going to do the SOAR analysis? You know, when are the goals and objectives going to be carved out? And again, because you're working with the superintendent and administrators, you create that full timeline. And so next year, that, that's what that planning committee is tasked with.
And the objectives are not coming from the board.
The objectives are not coming from the board, correct. And again, you're working with that structure you already have in place. The board's job is to create the goals, and then it gets handed off where internally the objectives are then aligned to the priorities and goals that the board has set the direction. And again, sometimes, year after year, you don't need to revisit, you can revisit the goals, make adjustments, you might not have to do a community survey, but that's why you have that planning committee to make those recommendations, so it may make sense to have it be more of a standing committee as opposed to an ad hoc. But that's for you guys to kind of, you know, discuss what makes sense to you.
So.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. You keep saying next year, and I just want to make sure that I understand. Next year's goals, but planning committee starts this year to start, yeah, getting that data, to be able to hand off fictitious date, right?
Yes.
April to say, here's the goals, and then it goes through the current process, right? Yeah, down to the different, you know, schools.
My hope is, is that on the, I think it's December 13th, actually, I looked at the date, 13th, at that training with Jamie, we'll walk out of that with goals. So that will be when folks come back in January, they are going to understand, how do I now infuse this into?
So the, the high-level goals should be, it's the December date is the goal to be able to.
Yes.
Do the 23, 24.
Yeah, we walk out with new, updated pieces specifically from the board part.
That area, okay.
And then the interim, this is where you, the board, discuss the committee. And putting the committee structure in place, not for, you know.
Start that.
This process, but to begin the process anew, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, sorry, thank you.
No, 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 it's good to get clarity, absolutely.
And can I just, I feel like the, the survey that was provided for last year is very specific for like, I mean, I, I remember talking about this with you and council, but, so it was very specific stuff about like relationship of the school and how we feel about the school. Is that the only survey we're going to do for like?
So that's where I hope on that December meeting when we meet, because at the end, those.
We're not going to talk about that until December then.
Correct. That would be the goal, board, and what we're looking at is that those last two questions are structured with that SOAR piece, that SOAR, the S part there, what things are going well in the organization, and then what things do you aspire, what things would you like to see there. Those two are where a lot of the substance and a lot of that meat is, where it's open to give that. And that's where we had those focus groups, which we won't have completed until December, we're going to have that same process go through with whomever shows up, faculty, parents, and say, let's go through this, what are here, and then we add value, again, so it's the same thing, like we just went through what's going well in the organization, to hear about it, and what opportunities do we have to do better here? That's the piece that's going to come to the board. It's not complete because we have many more focus groups to do. So then if for whatever reason, December 13th, it's like, that's not enough, then, then we'll have to go out and we'll have to survey again. And my, my hope or my intent is that we'll have enough between the survey as well as all the focus groups we'll still be doing.
So again, just, just because I see some confusion. Again, we're talking about two different things, but they're go hand in hand. Process just for this year is you guys are currently going to run focus groups. In December, you as a board will reconvene and decide based upon our current efforts, meaning between the focus groups, the survey that we've already done, the SOAR analyses that have already been, you know, distributed, does this provide the board enough to visit our goals to work, go into a workshop? If you decide in December, we need to do a community survey because we don't feel like, you know, what we've currently done has given us enough information, you are going to make the decision then, okay? Moving forward after this year, once we've gone through this process and you've gone through December and you've created goals, that's where you are going to make your changes to the planning process, and that's when you then task it to the planning committee, who then will for the, you know, you know, next year, what is the process that we're going to do this year, next year? But this year, it sounds like we already have a process in place that has tweaked it to allow the board to become part of it. But again, next year is where the planning committee then would be taking the reins and making recommendations to the board in terms of process, and then creating the timeline, and then, you know, deciding whether or not you want to do another community survey in the future. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Yeah. So I have two questions.
Fire away.
So question number one is, you keep saying we and you, and this room is inclusive of trustees. Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I, I'm sorry, that's a little bit of.
Sorry, I usually talk loudly. So you keep saying like we and you, and you're talking to a room of both trustees.
You're right.
As well as district faculty, staff, leaders, a minute, right? So I want to be super clear because.
Yes.
One of the things that our board has struggled with historically, just on the record, has been role, right, confusion and understanding what our role is. So when you are saying that the board is setting the goals, I just want to be super clear when you're saying you and we who we're talking about. And then to Amanda's point, I just want to follow up because we were talking about the survey that was.
Yep.
Sent out to the community. One of the previous slides was internal and external stakeholders. Now theoretically, we've gathered some data from internal stakeholders. There are questions about the survey, fine, but we don't really have externals. So I wonder if because it's July now, it's almost August, but if we do have a couple of months before December, would it not also make sense to just go back and, and do a quick check with some external stakeholders? Or would you suggest you just start anew in the next year?
So I think based upon what I heard, and again, you, the board, can have this discussion, and I would encourage you to do that in an open session.
Yeah.
You know, based upon the current plan for this year, meaning what we intend, and again, I'm using the word we as district, meaning spearheaded by the superintendent, creating those focus groups and bringing folks in, looking at the information from the survey that has already been, you know, distributed, and then looking at relevant data points. You, the board, would then decide, is this enough? If you, the board, decide that we need to go out this year with a community survey because we, the board, don't feel like we got enough input from external stakeholders, then you're going to work in collaboration with the superintendent to go out. Now, my understanding is that, you know, the December date is going to be the determiner.
Got it.
And that's where you, the board, at an open session would then make that decision, because if you're going to be doing it in January, you have a runway to go out and make those efforts happen. Does that make sense? Is that clarifying? Again, I want to be crystal clear.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
I know.
That's why I keep asking 100 times.
No, 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 it's good, it's good, you know, I know we're a few minutes over, but I'm happy to stay and do this with you guys here.
Yeah, no, because I'm a little confused with that, because I would think if we were establishing the planning committee, then, so we've got this December date out there if we're talking about possibly having a workshop, possibly having you back to help us with that goal-setting process in December. But then we get to that point and are all of a sudden like, oh, well, actually, we don't have enough information. What can we really accomplish in that session other than saying, okay, well, now we need to get a survey and then we'll do this again?
That's my point.
So what I'm wondering is, can't the planning committee, if we're, if the board decides to establish the planning committee?
But this is not for this year, though. I just want to make that clear. I think that what we've been saying here is that this committee is going to be implemented in 2023.
Oh, but why couldn't it be implemented sooner?
Because the reason that, and again, what I have understood thus far is that we have a process that's already been put into motion.
Yeah, Jamie, I think for, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, yep.
Respect, just on that, that piece.
Up in the front, I think it will be a quick committee meeting upfront, in particular, I'm interested in clarifying the timeline with the policy for what we're doing this year, so the.
Yeah.
Everybody knows what those focus groups dates are going to be, when they're taking place, so hopefully they can attend the community ones and things like that. So I see that part being there. The part I'm struggling with redoing, doing another survey part is, is that the ball has really been rolling. And so we've, as a full Adco, we debriefed that data set, we did the initial one in the spring, we have, the learning office is bringing 90 or so folks together in just a couple of weeks to go. That data set will have probably at least a half a dozen or eight focus groups that are established, and so I'd be very surprised if the board's not going to have enough data conversation to make a reasonable decision with this moving forward. I don't, I don't think there's anything magical that's going to come out of another survey. I'm going out and doing some focus groups out of the community as well, too. We're going to invite focus groups in through Tuskegee University to come in, anybody and everybody to come in and look at the results and let's talk about that. So I have to, based upon our, you know, previous experience, believe we'll have a good, good representation, and we're going to be meeting with the student body at the high school, get their voice involved in it, so there's just a lot.
Yeah, so I guess my concern is that if there's particular things that the board knows that we might be looking for and needing for that goal-setting process. How do we ensure that that's part of the focus groups? If it wasn't, we know what was on the survey. If there's something, and maybe we need to have this board discussion maybe at one of our meetings in August, but just making sure that as those, as those focus groups and things are coming forward, if the board, and it could be just done by the board and not having to be the planning committee, but if there's something that we are, we know we're going to be looking for in December, making sure that that's being captured in these focus groups are happening. Because you've planned, the administration has planned those and what's being discussed, the board hasn't had a voice in that, so making sure that we're part of that for this year.
Yes.
Before we're, before we kick into the whole thing.
And that's what I think with, with Nick and both, to the committee, where I'd like to connect with the committee on that.
Yeah.
And start it earlier.
And the intent is basically at those focus groups, much like today, we'll do the S and the O with those focus groups. What strengths do people hear and feel and experience, what opportunities are, and that, that will be then all aggregated up to bring forth to the board and the center, make a look, we've got eight times, 10 times, here's the buckets that were developed, and then that's a data set that the team will go through. But that's a part I hope to connect with the planning committee, just on that, so everybody knows, here's the meetings, here's who was at those meetings, and here's the general deliverables out of those meetings.
But the planning committee for next year.
No, 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 the planning committee.
Saying start one now.
This year would be almost like an audit and represented the board to say, hey, look, Ray and team is absolutely ready for the November 9th date or whatever the date is, right? The December 9th. You know, they, they should just be part of that process, yep, we're taking a look at it, they're in good shape, yeah, we should be fine with doing the planning.